Microphone on. Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'm gonna ask Mr. Skinner to open us with the demokration.
Let's bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. Father, you blessed us with a wonderful county to live in, our state, our country, Father. And we ask that you protect those that fight for our freedoms, those that respond to us, first responders. We ask that you bless their families. Father, we ask that you be with us tonight when we make decisions for the county and our citizens. We ask that you give us the wisdom to make these decisions. Father, we pray these things in your precious name.
Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag, I am the states of America, to the republic, for one nation, for God, his will, liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. We have several packets of minute, uh, meeting minutes to be approved, so we have the March 21st Commission Meeting, the March 21st Budget Work Session, and the March 28th 2023 Elected Officials Work Session. I'll accept the motion to approve all three.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Raise your right hand. That motion carries. Onto the agenda. Mr. Schlauchner, I believe there's one item that's gonna get moved.
Yes, sir. We'd like to move item H3B to the May 2nd, 2023.
And that's because?
It was a, it was a committee actually voted to put it on that agenda. We accidentally put it on this agenda, so just putting it on the correct agenda.
Consider it moved. Again, we welcome you to the April 18th Commission Meeting. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. The items on this agenda have been through the necessary committees and received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda. If they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve them all with one vote.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda as presented, except for the one change that we made.
Second.
Questions? All favor raise your right hand. There you go. Onto the debate agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-19.
Second.
Give us the quick version.
Uh, the school is issuing bonds. Uh, they have to have y'all sign off on a resolution that says that a sales tax that they have to pay these bonds aren't sufficient, that they can ask you to implement a millage increase that's related to them and their educational needs, not to the general county budget. Uh, and then y'all will do that. You are obligated to do this. It's not something you cannot do.
Understood. We're the taxing authorities, so we have to approve any bonds that someone outside of the school, the school board, we have to approve their bonds. So there's a motion, second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Commissioner Skinner, you have the next item. Mark Boyd, Boyd, you wanted to speak?
I've saved from that.
Oh, okay. Mark, did you have something to say? And just if you will, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Uh, yes, sir. Mark Boyd. Um, name and address? 4787 Long Lane, Evans, Georgia, 30809. Uh, I just wanted to be here tonight to, um, tell you guys about this, um, vote, um, and answer any questions that you may have. Um, if there's any in the negative, I'd like to try to get those reconciled tonight. Uh, if not, obviously, this is a board meeting, so vote. Can't answer all the questions. If I can't answer all the questions, then it would, a negative vote would be another six-month wait, so.
I had some questions. I'm just playing catch-up on this. So, um, I read that there was work started on this without a permit. Is that right?
County deemed that I had done some work to this project without a permit. There was some disagreement as to why we redirected some water to, which I had done in order to prevent it from backflowing the septic tank on the residential lot. The lot, one lot's commercial, one lot's residential, and the septic tank was backfilling from the wet conditions we've had. And talking with the county several times through the Health Department, um, they've got ten or more calls a week coming in for flooded septic tanks. Everybody's packed with, with work, so getting that corrected. And then I knew that the house is gonna be purchased for the right-of-way, so in purchasing it for the right-of-way, didn't need to start work on repairing septic tank leach field, just need to try to keep the water off of it. So that, that was done as a private owner, because I'm not a commercial contractor, but they deemed it work, and I went through the process, and I've been thoroughly urged.
So some of the work that you did, that all on your property, or was some of it on somebody else's property, and did you have authorization to do that?
I had spoken with the neighbor, uh, beside me, and there was a, um, about a hundred and fifty feet of, uh, age wire fence that had been put up some thirty or forty years ago. And then, and when we were cleaning the overgrowth and debris off the, off of the residential lot, uh, I discussed with him removing that fence, because it had vines and overgrowth in it, and we jointly with the neighbor discussed that. Um, on the Home Depot corner, uh, there, I had a truck deliver, I mean, a truck, when we first started this, I was using Dickinson Architects. They were telling me there was a lot of delays in metal building structures. I'm not a, I'm not the contractor, so I'm not gonna be constructing it, but we had ordered the frame for the building, and when the truck driver delivered it, I was not there. He set it right on the property line between us and Home Depot. And, um, I have had a conversation with Home Depot and have gone to their corporate office, because they own that lot. They say it's not a problem, um, at this point. I think I submitted a letter to Gary, um, with Southern Civil Solutions, and we, as soon as we get the okay to do anything there, a commercial contractor will pull a permit for this, and then it will be removed from their property line.
Letter, signed statement from Home Depot?
So at this point, I have been buying. I've had the manager of the Home Depot sign it, and we have sent it up to the corporate office of Home Depot and filed it with them, and they've sent back an email saying that if there is any problem, they will notify me, but as far as they have any vision right now, there's not gonna be a problem with that.
Have you been working in Columbia County for a while, or are you relatively new? I'm just not familiar.
So I'm a homeowner that's been here for twenty-seven years.
Okay.
Uh, I live on, off of Herford Farm Road, um, by the Board of Education building. I have never had any issue with anything in the county. I've always tried to follow the rules. This one, I thought, as the landowner, that I was doing the right thing protecting the septic tank. County Code Enforcement said I had moved too much dirt, because the place where I was holding the water back from the septic tank was in a similar position that a retention pond will be built in the future. They thought I was trying to work on that retention pond, which it's not designed or even engineered anywhere else. It's just holding back the water from the leach field to the septic tank. So we, like I say, we had that discussion and corrected.
Did, Mark, did you go to magistrate, magistrate court, and they give you a list of things you had to do? I've been told that you went and it hadn't been done.
Uh, um, so I've had two things told me, do not touch anything in any shape, form, fashion until I get through this process. So I've, I've been told I can't touch anything there, so.
That how the process works?
But wasn't, wasn't the magistrate court for something prior to this workover, this project?
That was a previous visit. The, this is on the last visit. There's, there was two different ones.
So we, we've been to magistrate court a couple of times?
Once.
So, so as a, Mark, as a residential remodeler and residential builder, which I do have that license, I had a case last year where an employee started dating a customer, having an affair with a customer. That employee took it upon himself to do some things on the side, and all of that probably went fine until they decided to break up. They broke up. She got angry and called Code Enforcement, and he had put, he had moved a light switch from one sock, one panel to another in the widening of a door, widened the door going into the living room, and then moved a light switch. Didn't install one, just moved it. But because he was my employee and he was under my jurisdiction, I showed up and took my little lick. But other than that, we've been in business for thirteen years, and I have never had an issue.
But that's a separate magistrate issue, not related to this one. But I didn't wanna get those next up.
On this one, I got the citations for the improper berm and for the water retention, and I went to that, and we've resolved that issue.
There were sixteen violations. Eight were dismissed. Um, they were basically duplicate violations. One, I believe, to you personally, one to your business, just to make sure the right person was there, whether it was Mr. Boyd, homeowner, or Mr. Boyd, contractor. So we, as soon as Mr. Boyd said, "I'll represent," I forget who you picked. Anyway, doesn't matter. Eight were thrown out. Dispositions claimed or stated that they must pay the fine. I believe you've done that. Comply with all ordinances and state laws, allow access for inspectors, and communicate with the county regarding pulling permits. That's what, that is what is in writing from magistrate court on eight violations. Now, there's some confusion, because what the judge said from the bench is not what was put on paper. People, we thought the judge told Mr. Boyd that he had thirty days to come with the fines, but that's not what is on here. I think there was some confusion there. Says, "You must comply with," or, I'm sorry, "communicate with the county."
It was not written the thirty, I was there. I remember Judge Quisenberry saying thirty days.
Right. That's not what was written. I've been through all sixteen, eight of them are thrown out, and the other eight all say the exact same thing.
So what the judge ordered, he didn't put in writing?
And how many of the eight have been done? All of eight?
So the, they submitted a new site plan, uh, I'm sorry, a grading plan. We call it a site plan. It doesn't show the building footprint, doesn't show parking. It, it shows grading. Uh, comments were returned to his engineer, Mr. Gary Bennett. Um, I believe, I talked to Gary Saturday. He is working through some things, waiting on those letters that Mr. Boyd mentioned from Home Depot and the next-door neighbor, allowing him to work on their property, uh, to basically remove some dirt that was placed on that property. Um, I'm assuming that Mr. Bennett will submit that back to us as soon as he has those letters back from Home Depot, so that we can then permit if all the conditions, or all the comments have been addressed. We can't issue a permit to allow Mr. Boyd to work on somebody else's property without their permission, so kind of the linchpin in all this.
So as a, as a note on that, Gary Bennett and Dickinson Architects was working on the plan, and then after the initial contact, I, I paid another seventy-five hundred dollars to have another plan and survey done for each individual lot, one commercial and one residential. In addition to that, in addition to, um, the, um, um, magistrate court improper berm.
Any other questions? Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a motion. I make a motion to deny the request for rezoning from R2 to C1 for property located at Tax Map 072A Parcel 059.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. One abstention. Motion carries four to one. Two people that have asked to speak.
Same.
Why don't you go ahead and make that?
I make a motion to approve the request for variance to Section 90-98, List of Lot and Structural Requirements, Property Located at Tax Map 072A Parcel 059, New Side Building Setbacks to Two Feet, Move the Maximum Building Setback Subject to the Conditions enumerated in the March 16th, 2023 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
Ms. Tiffany Drake has to speak.
Same piece of property.
Okay.
Which property?
Okay.
This, this is a variance request for the existing garage that is on site. Boyd mentioned we are buying the house as part of a road construction project, a road widening project. Uh, we have not come into those negotiations, but when we do, that, that house will go away for the widening of Herford Farm Road. The remaining garage, as it sits now, is not in compliance with zoning, uh, residential zoning or commercial zoning. Uh, as it currently sits as a residential zoning, it should be ten foot off the property line. Not, so the variance request is to allow the setback to be reduced. So Mr. Boyd brings this back to you in six months, this issue will be, will be gone. If it remains a residential property, this issue will be formed, so this does resolve one of his issues that he has to overcome of this property.
Mr. Boyd has two pieces of property. One's already zoned, C1.
Correct.
One is R2.
Correct.
So Mr. Boyd can continue working on the C1 property.
And, so if, if, go back, Patrice, where you just were. This is a, a concept to receive, so the garage in question is here on the residential piece. This is the piece that you just denied the rezoning for. However, this piece up here does have commercial zoning. He can continue to move forward with his commercial development with the zoning as is. He will still need to submit the plans to us. We're still on the same path. He gets that approved by meeting all conditions, all, all comments on the plan review, and issue a permit for this site.
Motion is second on the floor. Any other discussion? All favor raise your right hand?
Same.
Four yeses and one abstention. Sorry about that, Ms. Drake. I have a red line drawn between things. You have the next motion?
I do.
You do.
Uh, I make a motion to approve rezoning from R3 to S1, property located at Tax Map 082B Parcel 037, with the following conditions provided. Parking on the site should not be increased, or excuse me, shall be increased to ten spaces per the maximum, under Columbia County Code, Section 90-133. Any replacement of existing structure shall be designed to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Prior to the issuance of a building permit for replacement, the existing residence, the elevation shall be reviewed for compliance by the Clanning, Planning Commission. Third, approved only uses will be single-family residential or neurobehavioral center.
Second.
This request was actually a request from R3 to P1, and this was, uh, currently have a, a child neurology office on the adjacent property. They are looking to, um, expand. Original zoning they had received was back in, in ninety-seven. It was, was owned for a beauty shop, and then 2011, the current operator made the purchase of the existing location. They need to expand, so they looked at the property directly behind them. Uh, they do need some additional parking to get parking off the street. They do have a concept plan that shows ten lot, I'm sorry, ten spots behind the existing residence. They do show a one-thousand-foot expansion to the existing residence. Do plan to keep the residential feel to the building. Uh, one of the conditions you just mentioned is that if they do tear this down or rebuild, it must have a general conformity to the residences around it. As you did mention, it would, zoning that you recommend goes through would be an S1 zoning, and it would only allow a, a residence or this type of doctor's office. The only two things would be allowed.
Being that this is not what was the original application, the applicant.
I think it'd be wise.
That change.
Go ahead. Go on down, and Tiffany, you can talk after. Wait there till. Hey, just state your name and address for the record.
Wilson Haynes, 6004 Evans Town Center Boulevard. I have with me, Dr., if you had any questions for her.
Come up. Boys?
Yeah, um, and as you say, they were trying to expand this, the, the center that's there. The center's a great benefit to Columbia County. It provides a number of services that are not available otherwise, uh, to, primarily to children, adolescents, also to a number, a small number of, of returning veterans who have had, been referred to, for various reasons. Um, and they just need more space for, primarily for parking and for storage and for some lab and therapy centers. Uh, they're gonna use the space behind them that is at 3535 Stardust, which, um, does encroach into the next neighborhood. Uh, and I know there are a number of, there have been some concerns, and still some concerns, by some of the residents on Stardust, uh, and that's mainly what we want to address now, and I think that's probably your primary concern is, are their concerns about it. Their primary concern and complaint has been traffic and parking for the existing business, uh, which, you know, there, there has been some, some problems with traffic and parking, apparently. There's no way to improve it. They are where they are. The parking is maxed out where they are. They need some additional space. This gives them ten spaces off, off the street and back behind the building, so that, uh, it's not, you won't even know they're there, but it's, um, yes, it improves the main point that they've had, which is traffic and parking. Uh, they, their intention is to have as little impact on the neighborhood as possible. They want it to continue to look like a residential home. That actually is a benefit to their patients. Uh, the children feel more comfortable if the place looks like a house when they show up, so that they're gonna keep it looking that way. The front door will be, uh, emergency exit only. Nobody goes in and out that way. Nobody parks in the front. Uh, there'll be no signage out front, nothing to say that this is a business. Uh, they're just, they're gonna have it professionally landscaped, which was some, which was an requirement from the, um, Planning Commission suggested that, and we adopted that suggestion. Thought it was a good idea. That also goes to, uh, attenuating the, or buffering the landscaping in the, in the back from the next-door neighbor as well, but it'll help in, in the front and overall appearance, so that the place is gonna look better than it looks now. It's gonna look like a house. Anybody driving past it won't know that there's a business there, uh, and, and the parking and traffic will improve. Uh, the other concern that is a genuine concern is, well, what happens next? What happens when these people move on to the next thing? And I think that's been addressed by the request for a change to this one, to restrict it to what it is right now. Um, so, you know, there's not gonna be, they're concerned about a gas station or a, a, you know, strip joint or anything like that back there. It's, it's gonna always be either what it is now or something that this commission approves. We have a petition that's been signed that's, uh, should be in your packages. Twelve of the neighbors in the, in the neighborhood actually support this change, uh, because of the work, and these people have been good neighbors. That's their intention is to continue to, um, be good neighbors. The improvements aren't gonna increase their, uh, staffing because of it. They're not gonna increase the number of patients significantly, maybe one or two a day, but it's, it's mainly to be able to do better what they already do. Any, any questions I can answer?
How many people are working in the, the office up front? Because when I rode by there, there is a list of names on the sign out front now. I mean, my goodness. If those folks show up for work every day, you got a full parking lot.
Well, and that, and that's exist, that's what it is existing right now. That's what we're trying to work on.
One person.
You will just state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm.
How many people work there?
Uh, one, one person has left. One is part-time. Other is remote.
So how many staff members are there on a typical day?
Any other questions?
I just wanted to confirm that, that by changing this to, um, to S1 from the professional zoning that we, was originally asked for, that, that's acceptable to you, because we just kinda switched it here at the last minute to, to make sure. One of my concerns after hearing from the, the neighbors was that, oh, my goodness, what happens if they close the doors tomorrow and this becomes a tattoo parlor, a massage parlor, a liquor store, whatever, and I think that this, this answers that, because as the condition would only be residential or a child neurobehavioral center, and if you leave and goes away, it's that.
Tiffany. I'm on point this time, so. State your name and address for the record.
Tiffany Drake, 3531 Stardust Drive. Um, some of the questions, just hearing them come up here today, did get answered for me. My primary concern never started with parking or traffic. It started with a professional property being rezoned in the neighborhood. My neighborhood is made up of homes and communities, not just a building. It, we have a society in there where we look out for each other. The children play there. We know each other. We have survived them being at the end of Stardust Drive for over a decade. You'll never see a single complaint from Tiffany Drake about their parking or what's happening there. My primary concern is the future, and I think what you've indicated today satisfies me, but I still have to say, I would, I want it to stay residential, and standing up here like a child stamping my feet will do nothing. And I know there's economic good to us for that. I also know that Phillips Drive, across the street with Augusta Christian, there was something that the commission stopped because of that same thing. I work at Augusta Christian. I dealt with that, and I understand how important it is to those neighbors to keep that, their home. It's where they live. So my, my, I'm here representing thirty-three residents today. You should have a copy of our petition, too. Um, I've never even personally met the Emerson's or the Gangarossas in the time that they have been there. I know every single person that lives around me and down the street, and I just implore you to reconsider it, to keep it our residential property. That's what I want. I know that's what my neighbors want. It's very important to us. There's been families that have been there for generations. We've built our lives around it. We represent a vibrant and diverse community. It's affordable housing right there. It's a great place to be. 3535 is a great home for a new family, a, a couple that's retiring and is downsizing, a kid just out of college starting their career. That's the type of people that I like in my neighborhood. Gangaross is a wonderful person. I've read everything I could to research her and find out about her. I did, did see that she's been in practice for over twenty years. Retirement is on the horizon. I don't wanna have to be a burden on Code Enforcement either, saying, oh, you know. I did research the GIS. I found several different types of businesses that are zone professional, that are, you know, spas and retreats or some massage parlors, and I don't know anything about those. You just read about them in the news or hear terrible things. But my biggest thing is just implore you to reconsider. I would like my neighborhood to stay just that, um, a land of community and home and where I know the people and where we all know each other, and that's what I request. That's my wish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Have a motion second on the floor? Read a motion yet?
Yeah.
All on, any other discussion, any points?
I do have a point. Uh, I, I agree with what you. You know, you go to a neighborhood and you, you get on the main road there and you, you have an office or something, and then the next thing you know is the second house. Then it's the third house. Where is the ideal mark to draw the line, to, to not encroach on these people that have lived there for twenty years or, or longer? Uh, maybe second-generation folks that have been. Where do you draw the line, not just coming in and taking? That's just my thought on it.
Questions? All, this motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Carries three to two.
Next item filed, VA 230303, uh, make a motion to approve the request for a variance to Section 90-98, List, List of Lot and Structural Requirements, and 90-139, buffers and screening for property located at Tax Map 082B Parcel 037, to reduce structural buffers to ten foot and to reduce the front building setback to fifty-three, from the center line of Stardust Road, subject to the conditions enumerated in the March 16th, 2023 Planning Commission Report. in the March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three planning commission report.
Second.
Doctor.
Now that this property is, has a P-one zoning, there is a larger buffer that is required between this property and the neighboring residential properties.
It has an S-one.
I'm sorry, S-one. Sorry, S-one. My mistake. Uh, with S-one zoning, it does require to have a, a reduction in buffers in order for them to make their plan work as shown here. Uh, they're asking for a reduction from a twenty-foot buffer down to a ten-foot buffer, but they will be adding a, a fence. As you can see in the plan here, the, the circles with the lines between them, fence with some landscaping. In the front setback, uh, they're asking to reduce down to fifty-three feet to accommodate the existing structure. It should be fifty-five. So there's only a difference there.
I have a question.
Sure.
This is not approved. There'll be a structural buffer?
I would, I would, God, you're going to have to help with this one with it. Now being S-one, I think they have to dictate that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you're, you're still looking at a buffer requirement, but whether, I think the question is whether it's structural or not. I, you know, at this point, you, you know, that's something that you could include and, and require. They're anticipating that as part of the application. Again, that was under the P-one zoning, but I think, you know, if the applicant is agreeable to it, that, you know, the plan wouldn't have to change from what they're already showing. So it would just be implementation of the plan that they're, they were planning to, to do anyways.
Would that affect the parking that we're talking about if they don't? Uh, lose five spaces on the side there?
Without the variance, they would, yeah, that would be impacted because a twenty-foot buffer would be ten more feet into that site.
Well, they would lose those five.
The five along the east property line.
They would actually lose the one here as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Does the buffer come in? So all these would go on that. We're going to give them a net of four. And I believe one of the conditions you just placed on was they must have ten.
Yeah.
I may address it.
Yes, sir.
The, the, the buffer.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Yes, I'm sorry. The, the, the buffer is intended to protect the neighbors' light and sound parking lot. And that is.
Twenty-foot would protect them a whole lot more than ten.
It would, I understand, but we can't do it. But what we can do is strengthen the buffer. Uh, we intend to put a fence in that, you know, code. And that's why also their, their request for, uh, professional landscaping come in to, um, enhance the vegetation that would be in there to buffer. There won't be any light pollution at night. The only lights at night will be motion detectors. Um, so that's, that's not an issue. They're going to have brass pavers in the back so it won't even look like a parking lot. There's not cars on it. Um, so, you know, not like the, next to a real parking lot. But certainly we want, we're very conscious of that too, as we can make it. And that's the, that is the intention. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're good. What, what type fence is that dictated in the narrative?
It, I would say it'd be something opaque, so vinyl fence, something that you can't see through.
If it's not in the narrative, then are they, are they constricted in any way by what they can install?
Application.
Yeah, they, they.
What they promised to do.
I believe they did.
I don't recall the exact. May I invite Mr. Emerson? So how, how are you planning on doing?
From what, talking with, uh, or when we had done. Shadow box fence. Fighting. Trees and bushes alternating. Other fences.
But again, my point is, does it have to be in the, in the motion?
They're, and absolutely add it to the motion. I did find that applicants know that they will have a privacy fence. They call it a privacy fence, so want to dictate that it must be opaque.
I was thinking.
Shadow box.
It is.
Some places a chain leaning fence is a privacy fence.
Right, right, right.
We don't, certainly have no objection to that.
You want me to amend this motion?
I'm debating, I'm asking.
If we're agreeable to it, I think that's.
This is probably one of the hardest things we deal with is this. Trying to go into a neighborhood, we try to do the best we can to protect that.
And, and he should. And we, we agree with that. We, we want to protect the neighbors as well.
Plan says wooden.
Is wooden?
Wooden, wooden privacy fence.
It's on there somewhere. So we don't need to amend the, the motion, right?
Yeah.
Staff understands what that.
Got it. Sidebar, that's one we, do we have a plan for?
It'll be included part of the, uh, package.
I just throw out, just go ahead and make a addition.
I agree.
What's the verbiage that we need to add?
For the fence, dictate if you wouldn't, a shadow box fence, six foot tall.
As an addition to my motion, uh, one of, one of the conditions is a six-foot wood shadow box privacy fence.
Landscaping.
Supplemented with the landscaping, uh, alternating trees and bushes.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and an amended motion on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Next item. Mr. Chair, next item is, uh, RZ-two-three-oh-three-oh-three. Make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from RA to S-one for a lay-down yard, property located at tax map zero-one-five, parcel zero-two-two, subject to the conditions enumerated in the March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three planning commission report.
Second.
First mention, this is a request to go from RA to S-one. The owner has a camper rental business. Now, I'd like to explain that they do not rent campers on the site. Have a campsite where you would like to have a camper deliver. They will rent you the camper, deliver it to your site. They're not coming to this location. This is simply their lay-down yard to store their campers. They do have a couple sheds. They have, um, a carport. Uh, they do keep their personal boat, I believe, and a jet ski on site. Um, they have tested this site for percolation for a home site. It has a, a high, high percentage of, of failure rate on this based on the soil. So if it was to be developed as a residential property, it would have to have either, um, a special mound for septic or an aeration field or a lot of other things you can do to, to handle septic. Um, it is a seasonal operation. They're busy from March to somewhat December. They're usually there Monday through Friday, nine to five, hooking these campers up, delivering them. Um, they do keep some maintenance stuff on site to maintain their property. Be, any changes to this site being S-one and you have in the site, if they were to change this in any way, they would have to come back to you for approval or to expand or add additional buildings. Um, you do see that some of the conditions that are proposed, uh, they do have to fence and supplement the buffer along Jacklin Drive. And they have to do that within six months of approval if y'all grant the approval. Um, they will have to work with our landscape architect on the plan to supplement the existing buffers prior to them installing those. Something will. You happy to answer any questions you may have?
So the narrative states, I believe, a certain number of campers at this time.
Eighteen, eighteen, I think it is.
So that, that's what would be allowed?
This one, yes, sir. Yeah, they do have two, two trucks they use to deliver with.
How long have they been in business already?
I think they started the business oh-seven, I believe it is. I got to dig into my things. I've been on this location since, oh, yeah, seven.
Just started up.
No. They purchased this property in sixteen, but the business has been existing.
So why is it before us today?
We received a call and code enforcement went out and had a conversation. So this is a code enforcement action of bringing this site into compliance.
Other than that neighbor or I'm assuming that was a neighbor, have we heard from anybody else?
I'm not aware of anybody else. The one neighbor, Paul, the one complaint.
Any other questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Here is.
Chair, next we have file RZ-two-three-oh-three-oh-four. I make a motion to approve the request for a major S-one provision, property located at tax map zero-seven-two-B, parcel one-two-eight to change the use of the site, professional uses.
Second.
Currently zoned S-one. We received this S-one zoning, um, back in twenty thirteen, S-one zoning, but it only allowed a cleaning supply company, house cleaning office. And the reason they came back was to allow a tool repair office. So it was basically given contractor's office. Request now is to add all P-one uses as well to this. Uh, they are looking to do some upgrades to the exterior of the building. They are looking to put in a, a paved area. It's very hard to see here, pave this area of the, of the property. Uh, the remaining parking lot here will be asphalt buildings, which, uh, recycled asphalt over time during summer. That actually packs really hard. It'd be almost like having a paved parking lot, technically not hot applied. Um, the area, do we have an arrow photograph, Patrice? Up there. So this area here, they're going to do some cleaning up. That's going to be grassed. Um, that's their septic drain field there. So there'll be no parking in that area, but it will be cleaned up and grassed. The existing fence here will be removed, relocated back in this area. So all the parking will be here. Um, they will have to widen the driveway to meet the commercial standards. Um, they will have some overnight parking back behind the fence, but they're currently allowed to do that with the contractor storage. They will continue that use as well. You happy to answer any questions you may have? I'll write that down on my quick sheet. I don't know that it stated it.
Parking for.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, please.
That's the record.
Tricia Brown. We have two employees.
More than plenty of parking. You intend to sublease space there? You would just, I guess, have to make your tenant aware that there's limited parking.
How many units are you going to?
It's already, uh, has an A and a B unit. We occupy one and.
Renderings definitely make it. Looks like it's going to be.
Early there, yes.
Any other questions? Motion and second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Here is.
Next is file VA-two-three-oh-three-oh-four. Make a motion to approve the request for variances to section ninety-one-thirty-nine buffers and screening in section ninety-one-forty-seven I-11 use provisions for property located at tax map zero-six-nine, parcel zero-zero-one-K to prevent an emergency access and detention pond within the buffer against tax map oh-six-nine, parcel zero-zero-one-F.
Second.
Question for this variances to the, the buffers here, uh, just south of here is a church property. And this is, uh, going to be some outdoor storage. With the dissimilar zonings and the outdoor storage, they are required to have a buffer. Uh, in order to put in the outdoor storage, they have to have rock. They're going to generate some runoff. They will have to put a pond in. This is the low side of their property. Everything drains that direction. So allowing this buffer to go away and put the pond there will allow them to have a larger storage area as well as allowing an emergency access onto the church property. Church is in favor of this. Matter of fact, the church has, they got a deal worked out where they can actually use this as overflow parking when they need to. And full disclosure, the church is looking for a long-term purchasing this property. So eventually all have the same zoning and that buffer will actually go away completely. So, uh, buffer allows them to both utilize that same property.
Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Patrice?
Next is file VA-two-three-oh-three-oh-five. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section ninety-five-three list of lot and structural requirements located at tax map zero-zero-one-A, parcel one-thirty-eight to reduce the si- side setbacks to two feet and the rear building setback to zero, be subject to the condition enumerated in the March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three planning commission report.
Second.
Is this, this is an existing structure. They're looking to expand out the front of the building. However, as you see here, the dotted lines are the area where the house should not encroach into. And as you can see, it's, it does encroach into those areas. Um, the rear line, we're asking to go to zero because as you see, there's a slight encroachment onto core property. Core is addressing that separate from the county. It's core property. They're working out those details. We, we're not involved in that. However, we are looking to reduce the side setbacks to two foot as listed here to allow this um, extension of the house to the front.
Questions?
Then neighbors have complaints?
Have not heard any. This, these are, these are narrow lots. They've tried to get a lot in. This is R-four zone. I believe it's R-four zoning.
R-four.
R-four zoning. So narrow lots, you know, tried to pack them in there along the lake. So it's, it's tough to get these houses to fit on these lots.
Any other questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Here is.
Uh, next is file VA-two-three-oh-three-oh-eight. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section ninety-nine-eight list of lot and structural requirements, ninety-one-thirty-nine buffers and screening in ninety-one-forty, landscaping for property located at tax map zero-three-two, parcel one-one-seven to reduce the front building setback to waive the buffer and landscape strip requirements, subject to the conditions enumerated in the March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three planning commission report.
Second.
Frederick Kinnick, same. Kinnick is, please, name and address for the record.
Frederick Kinnick. I live at sixty-five-thirty Bobcat Lane. Uh, I'm a resident that lives directly behind this area. Our major concern right now with family, with kids and everything is the excess of traffic is going to be coming there. Also that area behind the building, kids kind of ride their bicycles back that way. The other big address we have is the concern with parking in this area right here, which is the entrance to Bobcat Lane. I sent pictures because I didn't send them in time to put on the slide. I sent pictures to the commissioners to see that they do partially block that road in case I need to get out or emergency vehicles need to get in. They would have a hard time. Also, close to the house, or close to the building, I'm sorry, is my water meter that runs in the grass there to my house or to the backside of my garage in that general direction. So they park their vehicles there also. That could potentially break that water line and now I'm responsible for repairing that. So the parking issue on that side, the northwest west side of that building is a concern of mine in my. The biggest, biggest concern we have is that and also the kids and the traffic and everything going there.
How long have you lived back there?
Uh, we're coming up on two years right now.
Was, has this ever been open since you've been there or is it?
No, it has always been vacant.
Now, where's the, I think we said there were three or four parking spaces intended for thirty-thirty. Where are they supposed to be? And then I think that we're going to share two or three with neighbor.
I believe they have a, an agreement with this property here for three spaces. They do have space. Have space on this side of the building to park. Required by code to have six spaces based on the size of the building. So you put three here and, and three here, you, that code, and they do have that agreement. I'm told to have a verbal with the church. Nothing in writing. I have not seen anything in writing, but I believe they can also use the church parking lot.
Other side.
Church is the one up here? And what's, what kind of business is down here?
Liquor store.
So I, I understand his concerns about his water meter and how could we maybe, is that how it's addressed now with the parking with the cones? Is that how we keep people off your water meter?
Uh, no, that actually is the backside of the building. And the reason the cones are there is because delivery trucks apparently have run over the septic system for one of these businesses back there, and they've redone that multiple times. That's why the cones are there.
Bobcat Lane, a county maintained road?
It is not.
No. I have to maintain the road along with the rest of the house, people that live on that road. That was also a concern of mine. Did I put down road maintenance with the extra traffic coming in there? Now I have to do repairs from other vehicles that don't normally live there.
Many, how many people are home?
There are three houses on that lane, and they pretty much dead end back there. That's the only way we have.
What are you asking for us to not let anything go in there?
Uh, just to keep them from parking there on that side of the building and make sure that stays open. And also have some way of coming up with some plan to keep, because they're not putting in the fences or any of the landscaping, some way to recognize that there are kids that will be out there running around. The business as far as liquor store, they don't have an issue because they have a drive-through and a parking, which is out of the way, and there's not really an issue there. It's more towards coming down this way.
I got you. So, let's see. Help me with Matt, north, southeast, and west. Is this?
Uh, well, this is the northwest west side of the building right there.
North is straight up.
Okay, so we, we can restrict the parking on that side of the building then, can we not?
That's what you want to do, yes, sir.
But it's not a county maintained road, so it's not like it can be enforced.
Be a code violation, be a zoning violation if you.
Be a zoning violation.
You can make a condition of zoning, that there's no parking on that side of the building.
You're not making a condition on the road itself.
What'd he say?
We, we are, there's already a condition that, that staff put in here that said that they cannot block that easement. That's the condition number three that should be maintained and kept clear for nine-one-one access and to the three properties located on Bobcat Lane. So we have that in there already for your consideration.
Okay, good. I think the issue that you're gonna run up against is, is there's a condition in there that it can't be blocked, but if somebody does park on that side, then potentially it could be blocked. I mean, it depends on the size of the truck or whatever. So I'm not, I'm not sure what, if the applicant has an issue with that. The cleanest thing to do to be able to maintain that through traffic to Bobcat Lane is just not, not allow any parking on that side. I'm sorry?
The applicant's here.
Okay, well, yeah, one, you can. Let him finish first, please.
That was, that was pretty much all I had. That was maintenance and everything. And uh, the only other concern that was brought up is serving alcohol or anything like that in there because you will have kids there, and we don't wanna have any issue as far as issues with vehicles and traffic and things like that. The liquor store, of course, they buy and they go. Uh, they may come here and consume. That's our concern. That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Please just state your name and address of the record. We have five minutes.
I'm Eric Abrel, commander of the Columbia County Memorial Post, six four four five of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, located at three thirty East Milledgeville Road Harlem. Uh, I represent the three hundred and ten members of our post and eighty-six members of our auxiliary. Um, I was aware of the parking issue, so prior to the public hearing, I solidified our parking agreements with the, uh, liquor store, which Ms. Reeve is the owner.
That property, that property, the property behind it and the property beside it. I'm Reeve Crandall. I own the liquor store, that property, and the oh three two one directly behind it.
Can touch this screen.
Okay, so I own this one, all of this, yes.
So you're allowing parking back at six, Eric, yeah?
No, I'm not allowing on, on this one.
Yes, ma'am.
No, no, that's a residence. I have someone that's living there. Um, but no, I'm not allowing parking there. If you'll notice though, there's parking, I mean, there's entrances to all of that property there, in there. So we wouldn't be blocking anyone's entrance to the person's house. This is all open. So with three cars there, it does not block. But I am willing to, since his water meter is there, I have installed on the other side of the building, the concrete pillars to keep anyone from hitting them. I'm willing to also do that on the other side because that's our water too. So I'll be glad to do that.
So as a condition of the rezoning this evening, though, the, there would be no parking, correct, on that?
I don't think that should be allowed.
I wanted to, the reason I wanted to make that comment was when I looked at the parking situation there, we knew that this was gonna be an issue, and that's why we made the agreements. I actually, I'm a, I'm a big fan of, uh, killing two birds with one stone. I'm not, I'm not, one of the, uh, conditions is to get an alternate landscaping plan. Since we can't have that buffer in the front there, I wanted to eliminate the parking on that side and use that as part of our alternate landscaping plan. Uh, I just, I didn't know if I wanted to do that, would I then have to get a variance for the parking or something like that? So, but it's my intention to move the picnic, can I move, sorry, to move the picnic tables over to the side there and just block that from parking altogether.
Hey, three hundred and ten members and eighty-six auxiliary?
Yes, ma'am.
They don't all come at one time?
Not at all, ma'am.
Okay. What's your average attendance?
Um, you, well, at our old location, we typically, our business hours are from, uh, four to eight, and there would maybe be six folks there. That would be a, a good, a good day.
So there's a motion on the floor. She's agreed to install concrete. I know exactly what you're talking about, the concrete pillars.
Pollards.
And so we need to amend the motion that applicant will put the concrete pillars in to protect the water meter, and that'll solve one. And outside of that, I don't know what we need to do in terms of, if we're talking about moving the picnic tables. It's, it's in the narrative that you can't block the lane.
Well, I'd, I'd move them to the grass part right there. The easement that we have for them is only ten feet. Um, I don't know if the.
The brown area is grass.
Yeah.
That's not drivable.
I got you.
Their easement's on.
That's what I was gonna ask. Is that the easement? Reeve, is that, is that the easement right there?
That's correct.
Easement's ten foot, so not the whole thing.
He had a concern about drinking. They're going to be drinking. I, I mean, I've been to VFW before, and it, it was available. So what is, what is, what's happening here?
So, sir, we're, um, at our old location, we did run a canteen, but in order for us to apply for a liquor license, we had to get permission from the church that's right there. Um, he objected to that, and I, I had, I respected his rights, and I said, that's no problem, so.
They will not be drinking on site, is what I'm hearing.
They're not gonna sell it.
We're not gonna sell it.
Not selling.
Bring your own?
Is that?
A private club.
Yeah, it's a private organization. Um, the intent of the VFW is not to be a bar and a place for the veterans to come and get drunk. Uh, I wanna continue doing the community service that we've done, uh, in Harlem, and this is just our base of operations. But I also have Vietnam-era veterans that just want to sit there and, uh, have a beer with their buddies, so.
Is this the correct zoning if it's a private club? Or going for commercial? Is it, does it matter? Is it just semantics?
It's, it's allowed. The zoning's proper.
Can you clarify what they're allowed? Are they allowed to, to drink, to bring their?
It's a private club. Um, if they don't have their own liquor license, I, we need to dig into that. I, I believe.
In a private club, you can carry into a private club.
I believe you can.
If they're on a commercial side. If it was a Wendy's, no.
Yeah.
But being a private club, who does like to carry beverages in?
I think so too. So I think the situation you're gonna have is obviously there's a, a store available next door. People will purchase there, and members will be allowed to bring it in the club.
And as, as the post commander, I've strictly forbidden any hard liquor, anything like that. Like I said, I, this isn't a place that I want people to come and just hang out and get sloshed and.
Right.
Drive off. I mean.
We've agreed that they can't do that. I can't prevent people from doing it. They will not allow any liquor. They're allowed, they're gonna allow beer and wine, but that was it.
And as a commander, I can enforce that on our members, so.
They, they can enforce it. We cannot enforce that.
Correct. I seem to recall a time when Westlake lost its alcohol license twenty, twenty-five years ago, and it was bring your own bottle. That was a.
Well, that, Wes, they had a liquor license at the time, so they don't have a liquor license.
They didn't, but it lost something.
I understand, but they, they don't have one that's gonna be in jeopardy. So if they're a private club, they can allow their members to bring things in.
Mm-hmm.
There is no jeopardy of losing a license.
Right.
They'd have to go through a lot to be able to sell. They'd have to add a commercial kitchen, which means they have to update the electrical, which they have to update the plumbing.
Bre straps.
They'd have more money in updating this building than the building's worth.
They're also gonna have to have seventy-five members, and it's gonna trigger potentially more parking, so there's some other things that's.
Well, and we have to have permission from the church next door.
That's the big one too, and just board.
Some people have complained that they really didn't want the VFW there because they wanted a restaurant. That was, they were upset about. I don't think it could ever be a restaurant. Look at the issues we're dealing with. That's never gonna happen.
Every issue that you're voting on tonight has nothing to do with the occupant. It has everything to do with the land. So I know we're poking, poking a lot of things at the VFW's shoes. The actual variance is for anything to go here, not VFW. Wendy's, Chili's, almond pop store, a house.
Barbershop.
Doesn't matter. If these variances aren't passed, nothing goes here.
The only request I've heard though is to amend the motion, if we haven't done it yet, with concrete pillars to protect the water meter. And outside of that, it sounds like.
Mr. Chair, I will, uh, add to the motion, the condition that we, uh, they install the concrete posts to protect the water meter, water line.
Second.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion, a second on the floor.
No, I was ready.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed.
Mr. Chair, we have file VA two three oh three oh nine. I make a motion to approve the encroachment agreement and the request for a variance to section ninety dash fifty-three, list of lot and structural requirements for property located at tax map oh seven two J, parcel one ninety-nine, to reduce the side set, uh, building setback on the northwest side of the property from ten to three, to accommodate the existing shed, subject to the condition enumerated in the March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three planning commission report.
Second.
This is a residence who had, uh, when he purchased the property, had two sheds in his backyard, as you can see from the aerial photograph you have here. Uh, one was removed and one was rotated. Um, after it was rotated, he did add, uh, two, uh, um, overhangs, carport additions to it. Total square footage is about four hundred and sixteen square foot under roof. Um, is required to be at the ten-foot line. They're asking to go down to the three-foot line. Listen to the motion. Did we mention the encroachment agreement in the motion?
Uh.
So it's, there's, in your backup, there's also an encroachment agreement to allow them to be inside a, a, the easement that we have? But it's in your packet, but I wouldn't make the.
It, it says, uh, the motion to approve the encroachment agreement.
Okay, just wanna make sure that was clarified. Are aware that if we have to get in there, they do incur the, the cost of anything that's damaged.
Questions? Motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of resolution twenty-three dash oh nine, twenty-three eleven, and twenty-three thirteen, to establish streetlight districts located in Four Oaks, Phase Two C, Green Point, One B, and Highlands Lake, Section Three. Authorize appropriate power providers to proceed, following per their proposals.
Second.
The three streetlight districts, two of them were developer requests, and they have made their contributions. One was a resident request.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. What the first reading carries.
Okay. I make a motion to approve a construction contract with Gary Civil Works for twenty-twenty-three L-MIG in the amount of five million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-four cents.
Second.
It's the whole L-MIG.
This is the L-MIG. However, it did come in over budget. Uh, we asked to put this on debate so the staff could negotiate with the contractor. We did, um, have to pull out two neighborhoods. Um, you have to scroll a long way down, but we took out Rolling Meadows and Tudor Branch. We'll include those in our next L-MIG package. By taking those two neighborhoods out, we were able to get it into our budget. Um, at the bottom of your packet here, you do have all the roads that are included. Old Bell Air Lane was brought up at committee last week. That is included in this package. Also have maps showing you all the roads that are being done. This is a list that was approved by commission back in December to advertise for bids. But we did remove Rolling Meadows and Tudor.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to postpone the construction contract with Southern Asphalt for the resurfacing of White Oak Road, County Line Road, and Stardust Road until the May sixteenth meeting.
Second.
This one, we're asking to postpone, uh, based on a, a waiting on answer from DOT. This is a, a TIA project, TIA-funded project. We did take on responsibility of bidding it out, managing the project. However, the bids came in, uh, quite over budget. We had a four point four three million dollar budget, came in at five point four eight. We have requested additional funding from the TIA office to cover this overages. They're having a risk assessment meeting on the twenty-fourth, and they have asked that we wait until after they have that meeting to give us that. Uh, once we do have their answer, we will need time to talk to the contractor if we need to negotiate with the contractor. So we're asking basically a four-week postponement on presenting this contract for y'all to have all the information before you make a decision.
I know that based on this date, it was projected that the actual resurfacing would start this summer. What do you think?
Don't make that.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Eris.
Make a motion to approve this, acceptance of approvals of Misty Meadows, Phase One, and a conditional license encroachment.
Second.
Of the roads that were built by the developer, stormwater, um, sewer, water lines, the conditional license encroachment agreement allows them to irrigate landscaping inside of our rightaways. Assume liability if any damage occurs based on their irrigation.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Eris. We have a number of, um, executive session items that we can deal with right here and now.
I make a motion to accept the donation of rightaway from the Board of Education for a portion of parcel zero seven three A four six eight.
Second.
They're building a new school. Um, this will be a donation to the rightaway to accommodate their new turn lanes they'll be constructing for us to maintain.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Eris.
Make a motion to approve one thousand dollars to David and Mildred McCauley, parcel zero two nine zero two seven B, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars to Troy Mallon, parcel zero two nine zero two seven D, one thousand four hundred dollars to Renee Terry Kirk, parcel zero two nine zero two seven G, and accept the donation Pumpkin Center Properties for a portion of zero two nine zero three zero B for permanent and temporary easement, for Forest Main for Uchi Creek Project.
Second.
For our Forest Main project, we're designing to transfer some of the sewer load from the Harlem area to our Uchi Creek.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Eris.
I make a motion to approve the agreement of purchase and sale with Craig S. Jones for parcel zero seven eight one three five C.
I'll take that. Um.
Second?
No, sir.
Second.
I, I needed you to amend the motion if, if possible.
Okay.
Or I need, I need the vice chair to amend the motion if possible. We do need the purchase price in there. It's one point five million dollars. I know we are approving the agreement, but if you would amend your motion to include that one point five million dollar purchase price, then we would, a second would be appropriate if someone's so inclined.
Make a motion to approve the agreement of purchase and sale for one million, five hundred thousand dollars with Craig S. Jones for parcel zero. for parcel zero seven eight one three five C.
Second.
Any discussion or debate? All in favor, raise your right hand, purchase happens.
Make a motion to approve six thousand dollars to Stock Properties LLC, parcel zero six one zero one four, one thousand seven hundred dollars to Leonard and Dean Tankersley, parcel zero six zero zero seven eight eight, three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, John and Yvette Sullivan, parcel zero six zero zero seven eight B, sixteen thousand dollars to David and Carol Dent, parcel zero six zero zero seven eight A, three thousand two hundred dollars to Benjamin and Shelley Winkle, parcel zero six zero zero five C rightaway and/or easement for the Hereford Farm widening project.
Second.
Just getting started, two hundred and fifty more to go.
Keep up your pace, come on now. Motion's second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve four hundred thousand dollars to Monte and Cole Holt, parcel zero seven one zero zero two K, ten thousand three hundred dollars to Sharon and Daryl Phillips, Junior, parcel zero seven one zero zero four X to rightaway and/or easements for the Harding McManus Road widening project.
Second.
Forty-six left.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Forty-six more to go. Legal matters?
Illegal matters.
Request for review by committee, Alan's not here, head of public comments, mister comments. Probably dealt with the excessions, executive session stuff, so I guess there's only one more thing to do.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, raise your right hand, we're adjourned.